All right, we have a motion to open the...
Make our motion and we open the meeting.
Plan of the meeting for...
The second.
March 11?
It is seven thirty-four.
Second by Steve. Motion by David. All's in favor?
Aye.
To be honest. A motion to continue the site plan review for fifty-six to February fourth term fight to April first at seven thirty.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Cliff Pearson. Second by David Jenklin. All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, since we have some time. Excuse me, we have some time before the eight o'clock continuing public hearing. So I'd like to, Kirk, who do you want to take the first of you?
I was thinking that we could, Wild Pasture Estates, there's a tripartite agreement that we can actually deal with pretty quickly. Is anybody here?
Yes. Laura Teller from Regnate Stereo in Osborne.
How are you doing?
Hi. And Jim Georgilakis is the manager of Wild Pasture.
How you doing?
And Ted had sent in a request.
It takes five seconds till they open up the materials.
Oh, sure.
Just everybody's looking at me. It's a little bit deeper in the agenda than... Hi, Chris. How you doing?
Good.
Chris, we continue the savory hearing until...
I noticed that you requested that, right?
April first, seven thirty. Okay, thanks. You wanted to stand over here just to...
Sure.
Get you back to the camera.
That's how I like it.
That was by design?
Yes.
All right. Okay. We're talking about Wild Pasture Estates' request to reduce the tripartite agreement. Some of them.
Yes. And Ted Regnate of my office had sent in a letter asking that it be reduced. It's currently at three hundred forty-six thousand one hundred and thirty. That it be reduced to twenty-five thousand dollars, which I think is consistent with Larry Graham's recommendation. The work is completed, but with all the snow, I think he wanted to just have a contingency if there's any damage that needs to be done, to repair any damage.
And as you know, we have approved that. We wrote to town meetings, because we know the as-built have been submitted and meets and bounds, et cetera, et cetera.
I've been working with, just as an aside, with town council on the draft deed and have been...
Great.
Talked with her several times.
Did you see your word, Teller?
Teller, correct.
Do you have a card?
Actually, I don't.
Exhibit B for you guys was Larry's letter, which itemizes where this final contingency's money could potentially be used after this winter. Top course payment, you know, for damages. And you can see that top course pavement, granite curving, it's damaged. Obviously, some landscaping, you know, seating that might have to be redone, signage that might be damaged, reconstruct driveway, deepened sidewalk at twenty-three Oakley Circle, and of course, to clean out drainage structures, which would definitely be necessary after this winter.
I don't see any trouble.
I think factoring in the twenty-five percent contingency, that I think they've pretty much covered all the bases with the...
Thanks for bringing that up, Chris. And also, as required, there is a form S this year as well, which depicts the total amounts of where that money was supposed to go this way. And that's the work that has to be completed and is secured by those amounts that being reduced. That's the form S.
Is anybody here from...
Yeah, she's...
Sorry. I'm here and...
No.
No, I'm the attorney for Wild Pasture.
No residents? No. No residents?
So that's a good question, Steve. Any residents from the subdivision here?
All right. So there must have been no complaints then?
Kirk, you don't think that's in your end?
Oh, no.
Okay. We'll take a motion to reduce the surety from...
I'll make the motion to reduce the surety, consistent with Larry Graham's recommendation.
Can I ask a question first?
Any discussion? Second. Second.
If twenty-five grand ain't enough, can we ask him to come back? Or are you agreed up? If it's anything more than that?
Yeah, if there's any other issues that go beyond that, I've always taken care of all the outstanding...
I think, I appreciate that.
I think we're in pretty good shape. We've had a good...
You're asking the person who writes the checks.
Yeah. I heard you did a great job over there, you know? Thank you, thank you for that. I'll be looking out for the people you're...
Absolutely.
All right, we had a motion by Cliff Pearson. You want to just, for the sake of... That was surety, just a little more detail.
Oh, okay. Well, I moved that we reduce the surety from three hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars.
That was a second by David.
That was a second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
In order to do that... Yeah, I'm just looking at the date, things from the last time. So if you could just cross that out and put today's date in and fill the amount in and...
Did I produce this?
No, we did.
Oh, that's good. I was gonna say, I don't remember actually. Okay. Do you want...
If we could take one original that we can get to Mr. Georgilakis's lender, and then you could keep one for your records, that two originals will work. You just got to fill in the amount, just twenty-five thousand, that in the blank, yeah. And then they just need to, I think if they're signed by the chairman, now that will work. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Kirk, who do you want to take next?
Cindy Lane, Mr. Abizara is here, John Moore.
Are we getting an update on Cindy Lane here?
Yeah.
The Bell Circle, John Moore and Said. Hi, John.
What, Peter Scott or Attorney Mullin?
We have all team here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we do have a, just, we have one letter from you that's in our package.
Yes, that's right. With some enclosures on it. Mr. Chairman members, my name's Tom Mullen. I represent Dr. Abizara, who is the trustee of the Abizara Family Trust. He's here tonight with his wife, Peter Ogan, his engineer. And we're here because we hope to put Haye to a longstanding inconvenience for the people of Rowley, and that is the incompleted connection of Cindy Lane and Wilson Pond Lane. This has been unresolved for a long time and has been a source of great inconvenience for all. My client, as you saw from the package, built the intersection pursuant to an express nineteen ninety-nine authorization from the conservation agent, and of course, he did obtain a definitive subdivision approval from this board. We now want to change or complete that intersection in ways that Mr. Ogan will explain, basically taking the wings off of what was a cul-de-sac, installing a crosswalk, and finishing the pavement. And we would appreciate it if we could deal with this as the fairly minor field change we think it is, rather than a modification of a definitive plan. However it's done here, we plan next to go to the Conservation Commission and get their approval. The fly in the ointment here for over a decade has been litigation. As you know, the original litigation by neighboring trustees against Dr. Abizara was decided favorably to my client. The only bit of litigation that's left is an appeal by the Farmhouse Lane trustees of an order of conditions that was issued by the Conservation Commission. He appealed that to the DEP, and it has just sat there. There's been no action on it. We would be content if you could grant us the relief that we seek contingent upon the dismissal or withdrawal of that litigation. We understand that there's probably, that there's some reluctance on the part of town bodies to get involved in a case where there is litigation. We want to make it easy for you to say yes. I think I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Ogan to explain specifically.
Just basically, good evening again. Just basically, this was...
Excuse me, Peter. Just, who you represent?
Oh, my name is Peter Ogan. I'm with Haye's engineering. Okay. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Basically, what we did when the original lawsuit occurred and there was a question as to the rights of easement, which we always felt that the Abizara Trust had the right of easement to do it, we put in a temporary connection, and that connection went from Wilson Pond Lane to Cindy Lane. And the temporary connection follows the alignment of the pavement that's out there now, and this is the as-built alignment of that pavement.
That's that shaded area, correct?
Like that. That's the shaded area. That area was actually built, it was to be a temporary roadway, but you people had Mr. Puff as your inspector at the time, and he...
Oh, road inspector?
Your road inspector.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah. They're still back a long time.
I was thinking, come out.
We're all a lot older. And so, because he said at the time, things that are temporary sometimes become permanent. It was done to the complete cross-section. It was excavated out, the requisite amount of gravel put down, but only a binder coat of car top was put on, and as was indicated by Attorney Mullin, the litigation then took quite a bit of time, and then after that, there was an appeal of an order of conditions. I think that was around a notion that we needed to do some more additional stormwater management. However, the drainage system that was put in at the time was put in back sometime just after nineteen ninety-nine, and there was a provision in one thirty-one forty that said that projects which had an order of conditions prior to a date, I believe it was in two thousand and eight, would be governed by the nineteen ninety-seven stormwater guidelines, which were not the same. So it's been like that. The drainage is there. The drainage has been operating all this time, all it's gone on, and it consists of, we tied into a catch basin, and we added a pair of catch basins here, and it discharges into a small retention area there, and then ultimately into the wetland. We feel that that drainage that was installed at that time would have been subject to that notion that you only had to use it as a guideline, and this is a case where really it doesn't make sense to do an awful lot else. What we plan to do, because the roadway is not perfectly smooth and doesn't have a proper section, we plan to come back to this point here, which is about where the termination of the existing sidewalk is, and scarify the roadway all the way to here where it ends up being, goes from being binder only to being top. Scarify that, adjust the catch basin grades, put a proper crown, and as Attorney Mullin said, eliminate this temporary cul-de-sac because it's not necessary, it's a throughway. There was also a situation where Wilson Pond Lane had the sidewalk on the east side, and we had the sidewalk on the west side. I'm not quite sure how that all came to be because it all came before the planning board. I think the reason was that there was a T-intersection originally anticipated, and so with a T-intersection, it wouldn't have mattered that you had that situation. But where this is not a T-situation, so we have to somehow make the sidewalks connect. And what I'm proposing is to put a sign that indicates that there's a sidewalk ahead, put a handicap compliant sidewalk right across the street there where there's good sight distance, also a pedestrian crossing sign here so people know it's coming up, so that the sidewalks would be connected together. There's plenty of sight distance here. It's kind of an S-shape in the road, but there's plenty of sight distance as you look. And we think that it just, Said Abizara is willing to go forward with it. We think it makes all kinds of sense to get the thing finally settled and squared away, and then we would go finish off the necessary paperwork so that the roadways would be offered up to the town to become public place. I think that basically explains what we have in mind.
So you're saying that you want a field change approved by the board? Is that the relief you're seeking? You want the board to approve a change of something?
We'd like the board to approve the proposed changes that Mr. Ogan just...
Well, what are the... I'm a little unclear about what the proposed changes are. I mean, changes from the approved subdivision plan, I assume?
Yes, the original...
Basically, itemize those?
It's predominantly an alignment issue. The original alignment that was anticipated, as I say, was a T-intersection. And it actually, this roadway, Road A, would have come into Wilson Pond Lane as a T-intersection, and Wilson Pond Lane would have continued across this wetland. That was never accomplished for a number of reasons. One of them was, the original design was fairly prohibitive cost-wise, and that was always, I think, for the Wilson Pond Trust, I think that was always a stumbling block. There was a fair amount of unsuitable material underneath there, so they never built that alignment, so...
A lot of replication, a lot of problems, I remember.
Oh, yeah. In fact, I came to the hearing early on and tried to work something out with them, but it didn't seem to work. So it would be a change in alignment. The alignment originally was to go like that, and then our alignment stopped here, but it would have gone into that. And we had the right, our easement right, allowed us to create a way over either parcel C or parcel D. So it would be accepting this alignment. And then as far as the construction is concerned, we actually submitted a plan back then that showed the change in drainage, what was actually built as what was called a temporary because it wasn't finally approved because of the lawsuit. I think that this design probably would have been approved back in nineteen ninety-nine, and we showed you the letter that Conservation said we could build it back in nineteen ninety-nine. I think it would have probably been approved if it hadn't been for the lawsuit, which was sort of an extended litigation, I guess you'd say.
Who might have been chairman then? Who might have been chairman then?
I don't remember, actually.
So it's just a change, it's just a change, the alignment of the roads?
Yes.
From a T to just a single straight road?
Yeah, I mean...
The road that's on the ground now?
I couldn't represent it as being straight, but...
Right, well, okay.
It's a kind of an S-curve, but there's plenty of sight distance.
It's the road on the ground today, right?
It's the road on the ground today. That's basically what was constructed.
You want us to approve what's there today, essentially?
That's correct. With the stipulation that we are going to go in and scarify the roadway section, if you look at it, it was great, this was graded a little bit like a circle here, there's one catch basin over here. We added catch basins here when we did this connection coming through, when Said built that, and this drainage. We're actually going to be able to eliminate that catch basin and change the alignment a little bit of the circle. I said, take the roundings off, and we're going to scarify it. I did a lot of look at the grading, and you got to scarify it and regrade it, but it will work.
Do you think, so the Conservation Commission, you're going to be going in front of them soon?
Yeah, I think we have to, but I think with the amount of work that we're showing, it's really just putting a top on this. I mean, it is being scarified, but that's, you know, often approved under a determination of applicability, and I think in this case, they could easily do that.
And I would like, I would like to get the board to take on the stormwater situation.
You mean the commission?
Yes, the commission. And John, I mean, you could liaison with them to, and Kirk, just to, I don't, I want to leave it up to them as to what mechanism, if it's a determination, that obviously would be better. But I can't speak for them, but I, as a chairman, am not going to entertain taking a vote till I get some feedback from them. I mean, just, because I think you're asking for, you know, I know when that was built, and I have a question with the detention, do those catch basins drain into that detention basin before you get to the cul-de-sac?
There's a little...
Or is it afterwards? Is that what that is?
These basins drain into a manhole and then into a head wall, and there's a little, we call it a siltation pond here, it's a little like detention basin.
Yeah, but it's all filled with, like, big trees now because of all growing in and stuff.
Well, yeah.
So you think, you feel as though it's your obligation? I know, I mean, you've been held up by litigation, so it's not the typical, you know, transferring the maintenance of these structures to others, but I believe that's just grown in, so I don't know whether it's functional or not. Isn't it at pretty much the same level as the pond? Or it goes up and down with the pond? I mean, it's a siltation, it works to some extent.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's actually depression there that shows up in the topography. It's all kind of a second disturbed growth that's in that area there now, you know? Certainly, as part of our work, we could ask to clean that, if the commission wants to do it. And again, that work can be done. First of all, the DEP has said that a detention basin that's constructed as part of a construction project does not become a wetland under the Wetland Protection Act.
Correct.
We'd be able to do that, and I don't think that you'd have any problem cleaning that out as part of the work, correct? Yeah. We wouldn't have any problem cleaning that out as part of the work.
No, I think also, I mean, as part of, you know, street acceptance and getting on that track, you know, you're going to have to, you know, John, you're going to have to get some feedback as to the maintenance of all the drainage structures on that part of the road.
Well, I'm sure the town has done with all their other subdivisions. It's usually before the town accepts anything, they require that all the basins be cleaned, all the stormwater detention basins, that they're maintained, that they've been maintained, and if they haven't, they're maintained before the town accepts it, which usually is really just getting in and cutting the vegetation when you're dealing with ponds like this. It's not a whole lot of work.
It's got to be like four of them, three or four. And they're a good size.
Yeah, there's some really big ones in there.
Yeah, they serve as flood control. I mean, they have, you know, you built it for a good reason.
Yeah, and I think we anticipate doing that as part of the street acceptance. This is something that would have held up, or does hold up, the street acceptance. We can't move forward with it because this needs to get resolved.
Exactly.
And I think, I think after all this time, this is a good resolution to it, make it happen.
John, you're our consulting, you're our review engineer in this.
I met with Peter and Attorney Mullin and Mr. Abizara, and we discussed this, and I agree with Peter that the, based on the regulations and based on the plans that he had shown me, that it appears they had submitted back in nineteen ninety-nine, that the project wouldn't fall under the current standards, and a lot of these improvements they were trying to make in two thousand and seven really aren't required because they are grandfathered under the old provisions.
Are they truly grandfathered on a temporary road?
Well, I don't, I believe that they actually submitted a plan that wasn't, it wasn't proposed as a temporary road. They proposed a plan, which is, I believe, this plan, which was...
That's correct.
The permanent road.
Right, right. And I see the letter from Tim Purdon that...
And this was built, and...
We must have voted on that or something.
What they're asking to do right now is come back in, fix what was built, because as Peter said, they didn't put the top coat on it. You know, it's worn down, they're having issues with meeting the drainage. So really, it's nothing more than, as Peter said, grinding it and regrading it so that the drainage works properly. One thing they didn't propose when they did this plan, and I believe that's really what they're asking for for the mine, the field change, is they didn't propose to remove the wings on the cul-de-sac.
I thought that was required.
And they didn't propose the sidewalks, and I believe it was, I don't know why it wasn't proposed, but now they've got that proposed on the plan that they have.
I like that much better.
So really...
You got a loman seed, though?
There's grass plots and stuff, yeah. We'll finish it off like a proper road. I don't believe that that cul-de-sac was ever shown on a plan as being laid out. You said, is it required? There is a regulation in the subdivision, state subdivision control law, that anything that's laid out as a temporary turnaround has an automatic abandonment upon extension. But I don't think that was laid out. I think that Wilson Pond Lane came and constructed to that point. I think they didn't continue any further because of the difficulties in topography and what we talked about. And so I think just to accommodate a turnaround before we got going, they just paved that little thing. Our road came after that cul-de-sac was paved.
Yeah, and I see that letter from, who was our conservation administrator at that time? From Tim saying that that was dirt for a while, right? I can't even remember. And it was causing plumes of dust.
It was dirt for a while, and like I say, it was said, well, we'll...
Where was the dirt section?
It was paved to the point that...
Just the cul-de...
It was paved...
From the cul-de-sac on was all dirt?
This plan shows where it was paved to, on this side... This plan shows where it was paved to, on this side, and then the pavement picked up, maybe not quite at the wall, maybe it will be on the wall. Do you remember exactly?
Correct.
Was it right to the wall?
I am 100, or less than 100 feet from meeting House Road.
Yeah, this was certainly less than 100 feet. I think it didn't quite go to the wall. In any event, so that part was just dirt through there, and then ultimately it was said, well, the thing was, because we didn't have approval for the layout and so forth, was to put some temporary pavement in there, and that's when your town road consultant said, no, I want you to excavate it out and put the proper sub-basin in and everything because temporary things sometimes have a way of becoming permanent. And the reason I'm saying that it has to be regraded now is not because the roadway isn't stable or anything like that. The roadway's stable, and it's been there a long time. But the standard cross-section wasn't held through the circle, and so there's a kind of a funny transition. What you want is to have the crown held right through and have the gutter held right through.
Exactly, exactly.
How does a pending DEP case affect your ability to do it, or does it?
Well, I don't think that it does. We are going to, we need approval from this board, either as a field change or a modification, and we need approval from the ConCon. We're going to go back to the ConCon, as Peter just said, and argue that we originally obtained approval from the ConCon for the road in its current condition, and that we are grandfathered under regulations that say the current stormwater regulations do not apply for, to a project that is that old. So we're going to be looking for their approval as well. We would like to just get a clear, clean approval from both boards, but as I said earlier, if either board feels that they can't give us that without a condition that the existing litigation will be terminated, we can live with that, too. It's going to help us a lot in going forward, we think, if we get even a contingent approval from both boards. I should add also, I've spoken briefly with Judy Pickett about this. Talked to her last week. Now, I don't want to speak for her, I don't want to try to interpret what she believes, but she was very happy to see us proceeding in this way, and I encourage you to talk to her.
All right.
Okay. With plan approvals, you can go ahead and bill, finish the road, and that'll be the end of it.
All right, I'm going to put you on at eight o'clock on April 1st, but I do need to take a vote tonight to, you know, to give you an extension on the tripartite, correct? You do want at least that, right?
If you're not going to be able to deal with it tonight, we appreciate an extension, sure.
Right, all right. So they simply, we had brought that up last meeting, remember?
I'll go with an extension because I like your idea here from the Conservation.
Well, and also, I think, a little more time for Kirk to talk to John. I just got to wrap. I think it's a good, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I don't know, it's only a few. I just want, I have to get going because of the...
We also, don't we also have to approve it before it's accepted by the town?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so we have control at that point.
We are certainly want to go forward and get this approved, especially after a winter like this, without a doubt. I mean, personally, I do. I think the board would agree. If it's complete, we would like to work towards approval.
Oh, sure.
Acceptance, right, Gene, and acceptance of this road after a long time. I know Kirk, we have Kirk to be working on it as a liaison. And John, so now the team is assembled again. Peter's presentation was good. It's definitely improvement even over the minimal plan that was already there for the residents, you know, with the crosswalk and...
I wonder if we should be asking John for some sort of recommendation?
No, 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 I want time for you.
Okay.
That's, yeah, thank you for bringing it up.
So are we looking for something for the April 1 meeting?
Yeah. For Kirk, just so we have something concrete to vote on, so I can really formulate the motion. You brought up as council, you know, as longtime council and as certainly knowledgeable throughout the legal litigation that the town would be. I read something in writing that we are indemnified from, you know, by taking such a vote, Gene. I mean, just, you said it in the letter, you mentioned that in the letter, but I think we need something besides the letter. I'll work with you on that.
Sure.
Maybe just a little more clarification of what...
I was, I was making a statement of my understanding of the state of the law, not offering indemnity, just...
That's what I thought, I know that, but I'm looking for a little more clarification there before I could ask for a vote.
Sure.
I don't want to put, you know, the town or any members in jeopardy by just having kind of your interpretation without talking to Judy. And I know you started that process, too. So can I have a motion to extend the tripartite?
To when?
That was to, what, July? Said, July 15th, are we extending it to?
I'm sorry?
Are we extending your tripartite to July 15th?
No, it is up to August.
Yeah, August 2015.
But probably extend it like, well, I think we're looking to at least get this...
One year?
Yeah, one year, but I mean, I would hopefully get this to the fall.
Yeah, I would hope.
But at least to next spring, so that we maybe...
Right, right, because we're going to always shorten. I mean, you know, you can come in and ask, but when you're done, you're done. All right, one year then, okay?
It is August 2015.
Say, August 2016 would be a good...
We'll check it. We'll check it. I know.
Is your bank giving you pressure to extend it?
Yes, yes.
I prefer to see a shorter extension.
That's what I thought. We, as a board, we're trying to shorten the time.
You can always extend it again.
Right, so August, August 15th, 2015, all right? Have a move to...
August 2015.
15, because that's when this one actually... What are we voting, we're just voting against it from August to the... They have the, the TPA states they have to finish their construction.
They have to finish it, that's why.
Yeah. But the thing is, is that, you know, there's a time window. There's where they have to begin construction, and there's where they have to finish construction. And they've already begun the construction, that's not really...
But that's an internal matter for them to get, that's an internal matter for Said to get an extension from the bank beyond that, if you need, if need be, right?
Yeah.
Which is why you want to get going and do this. So that's plausible if they get going and do this, right? This will only take a matter of a couple, a couple months, a month?
Sure. Finally, there's that drop deadline where the planning board would have to make a decision.
So we should give ourselves a month, so then July, right? So we should extend it before then, because we can't extend it beyond, as you're saying.
I don't know.
Can we extend it beyond that? If the original agreement does state that, you know, construction has to be completed by August 15th, then you have to come in, you have to have a new tripartite.
I wasn't coming here to be asking for an extension of the tripartite agreement. We're looking for...
Well, I know that, right, I see, yeah.
And frankly, I don't feel like there's such time urgency that you need to deal with that.
Well, I thought it was, okay, that's fine. Okay, we'll see you the first at eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Sorry about the people that have been waiting here for the zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've got two words on the board, and it's not easy. You should be so. Plugging leaks, huh? I heard such a bad story.
Oh, yeah. See, well, you bet you won.
All right, we have a contingent public hearing. And I appreciate the people that came out for a few weeks ago. We met based on a zoning review board recommendation to, because of the situation over on Route 1A, Main Street, where there's some existing businesses, but those businesses in essence are moving, there's grandfathered businesses, and the businesses are moving to another plot there, and so these are long-time businesses that bring people into Raleigh, in Essence Flea Market, and Antiques. I guess it might be other names for it, but I guess that's primarily what the businesses are. And the planning board and the zoning review committee, along with the planner and the selectmen, are looking for a way under the current zoning, as we know, to ameliorate the situation and come up with a solution nearby, you know, with some flexibility in moving these businesses around. So we had a public hearing, we had some input, but I think at that point, some of the residents would kind of wrap their minds around actually what we were talking about. So if there's been a chance for people to gather more information or maybe have more time to think about their opinions, I'd like to hear it subsequently. Well, I will let, before we do that, there has been an interim zoning review committee met once again.
Right.
And what we got coming out, Cliff and, who was there? Cliff and Kirk over there.
Well, Kirk, you can correct me if I miss anything, but basically, we talked about the proposal that's being heard tonight, and it was heard at the last meeting, the proposal being to include the 65-acre area in the central district. We discussed the pros and cons of that. I think there was, there was some recognition that maybe that would have undesirable consequences in the area, and so an alternative proposal was considered that would make this 65-acre area a, what's called a zoning overlay district, which would allow the two uses that I think new uses, businesses that we're talking about, flea markets and antique shops in this area, but not open up this area for a broad range of commercial development and multifamily uses that would happen if the current proposal is adopted. I hope that makes sense.
And I read some of those uses last time, you know, for, if people weren't, didn't look at it in the zoning.
Oh, the other thing I'll add is, at the end of the discussion, I think it was agreed to seek advice from the town council on the legality of creating this type of overlay district, and I think we still haven't yet heard from, definitively heard from about that.
Because right, right now in this outline, it's, it is not allowed. In the central district, which was proposed, and our role really is in an advisory capacity to the town meeting, it's really for the people who could vote if it does go to a warrant, if it did go. The zoning review committee is really the committee that has, you know, will be formulating a warrant article if one comes up, right?
Well, the planning board will have a handle on it.
Yeah. But I mean, typically in town meeting, as you know, if you've been to town meetings, you know, finance committee recommends in the zoning articles, it would be, you know, the planning board recommends or does not recommend, but then it goes to a two-thirds vote.
So I think it probably needs to be emphasized, however, that the only thing before the board tonight is the proposal that we considered at the last meeting, which is namely to include the 60, transfer the 65-acre area from the outline district to the central district, which, as I said, would open up the area to a broad range of commercial uses and to multifamily housing.
Such, yeah, multifamily housing, small retail, antique shops, consumer services, banks, credit unions, without drive-throughs, funeral establishments, restaurants without live entertainment, formula fast foods are at this point prohibited in town. Professional and business offices, medical and dentistry clinics, historic charitable philanthropic associations, research laboratories and facilities, overnight lodging, hotels, motels, inns, museums and libraries, filling stations, and motor vehicle repairs and more service. Now, granted, some of these are allowed by special permit or site plan review only, so they would have to come. It's not like they're just without going before the board or the plan.
I missed the last meeting, so I haven't commented.
Would you like to?
I would love to. I think that this would degrade the present central business district, and I've heard from some people in this area and outside of this area who have the same concerns about the types of uses that potentially can come into this area besides a flea market, and that that then would take away from the present downtown that is somewhat confined, et cetera. So I would not really be in favor of that. The overlay district, I like because we could set standards and controls on that in site plan review. And there's another issue that would come up. Right now, the historic district covers the first 200 feet off the road, and some of these parcels go way back in there, and they would not have any historic control over those, and they could degrade the historic district at the same time. So in the overlay district, I think that one of the things that we should include in that is historic commission approval of whatever we would decide to.
And that's where I think, you know, some of the robust activity that takes place with flea markets, antiques, gives Raleigh kind of a historical...
And I have no problem with that.
And it gives, I mean, people come to the town for that, where I think that's...
I have my secret way to get around all that traffic.
By boat?
No, not by boat. Cross street.
It's almost a secret out there.
No.
Gene, you weren't here, would you like to weigh in? You've been in the town quite a long time. Gene Petrilum is our associate member now, but was on the board for many, many years. As a full-time member.
She's still on the board?
Yeah, of course she is, that's...
Well, I think the way Cliff and David think, that it would be difficult, because that area is really almost residential. As you're driving down, you know, it looks really nice here in that area. But I'm not opposed to the flea markets, I think it's great for the town. So I like this idea, our community's idea of an overlay.
Yeah, and clock's ticking, because we come up, we just, you know, Kirk's working hard to get an opinion on that, and then we would have to try to get it on the, you know, special town meeting warrant, which can be written fairly close to actual town meeting time.
Right, and if it's decided, the selectmen really decide that they want to go with this overlay district idea, we would have to schedule a new public hearing.
Sorry, man, time's ticking, but...
Hold a, hold a public hearing and then deal with that issue separately. So we really need to close this hearing out one way or the other tonight, and then see, you know, start the other thing as a new thing, if that's where people want to go.
Right, and we're, you know, we're not the proponent of this, so at this point, it doesn't take action on what's in front of us, as you said.
Right.
And as much as the overlay district seems to make sense, I think we need the comment of Judy Pickett determining whether, I mean, what we're talking about really is spot zoning, because we're going to pick what, you know, very few commercial activities you can do on these parcels, and so I'm sure that that's something we have to make sure is permissible in this overlay.
That's what we're looking for.
Right, so, but that, in other words, that's not on tonight, so it's...
I would call it spot zoning, but that is the issue, I think, is this, would this be impermissible spot zoning? I don't think it is, but, you know, we're...
Right, right, yeah. And that's where we want Judy to weigh in, but yet, that's not our mission tonight here, is just to make a recommendation on this. I, I mean, I know that a lot of people here are probably here for this purpose, right? So is there anybody that, I mean...
I'm going to. And I know who I'm going to. Can I call in, okay?
I spoke to some people down in the area, and people I spoke to, they're set against this. I would go by what the people want that live there, you know, I...
That's why we have these hearings.
Right, I understand that, but I would think they would have more say than anybody.
All right, well, Steve, you're here, so I'm going to call in you first.
I'm here for representation, answering questions and so forth, because Nate couldn't make it.
Yeah, because Nate did a nice job in the last time. I saw you taking each place tonight.
I'm just going to reiterate that there is no hidden agenda here. A lot of people think that, you know, we're up to something.
I don't think they're...
Nate has been very clear on what all of our goals are, and that basically is to keep this land open and desirable, at least to the neighborhood. We've talked to a lot of the neighbors, they understand how we do things. Before we go to any boards, we usually go to them, let us, let them know what we're up to and what we see... up to and what we see for the future of the property. That's the case here. I can't understand why there's a lot of people against it, and I'm seriously doubting that's the case. This land, we had an opportunity to keep it open space, and we took it. And it was costly. We didn't want houses to come into the area. We didn't want it built up. I believe there's probably maybe eight to 10 house lots out there with today's regulation. We didn't want to see that. We wanted an opportunity to get this property. We got it, and now we're going to pay for it. That property alone is about $130 a day to keep it in open space. That's doing nothing with it. We'd like to be able to pay for this property over the next five years. That's when the costs are going to be high. We've had a lot of offers. Most of them are related to farming, and that's what we do. Okay? I've entertained in the last three weeks, one offer for a pig farm. I know how everybody feels about a pig farm, and that, I didn't say that because it's a threat, but there's people looking for open space. We wouldn't even consider it because, well, first of all, Mr. Gavin would probably take the brunt of all that. We don't, you know, we've been friends for a while. We're friends with most of the neighbors in that area, and we don't want to see it in the first place. But that's farming, and we're allowed to do that. The other thing, what Nate has proposed, we'll bring some income in so we can pay for this property, all right? As far as I'm concerned, and I don't think Nate feels the same way, we're allowed to farm. Now, flea markets are very close to what nowadays is being called farm fairs. It will allow us to do exactly what he wants to do. We have a junk dealer's license. I don't think that he has stated that to this board. A junk dealer's license, as far as I know, is exactly what's happening on the other side of the street. We've had that permit for many years. We haven't used it to its full capacity, but we've had it. The selectmen, as far as I know, knew about this permit. They vote on it every year. It's renewed, and we're using it to a very small extent. In my eyes, and I think in anybody that has a legal background would understand that that permit gives us a lot of leeway. Nate wants to do this right. We want to do it right. Our first concern is for the neighbors that will be impacted. Okay? We've discussed this. You know, it's, all we're asking for is flea market license. Now, the way that Nate approached this, he was set in a direction by the selectmen to pursue zoning changes. Okay? That's a lot of work. That's town meeting and two-thirds vote, and it's getting blown up. But now, we're looking at that maybe being an option or somewhere in the middle. We want to be able to run a business down there, a flea market business.
That's where we're at.
It allows us to keep the space open, and it gets a little crazy on the weekends. All right? That's all we're looking to do. But if the business grows, we want to be able to grow with it. We don't want restrictions that are going to keep us down here if we can make this profitable, which is kind of the emphasis if you're running a business. All right? But we're always going to take into consideration our neighbors, first and foremost. And I don't think anybody can say that we don't do that.
Right. No, it is. That's not even the discussion. It's a public hearing, too. The town has had, for what, 100, for many, many, many decades, zoning. State statute allows towns to have zoning, as you know. You've been through this so many times, for many and many different venues. And we have zoning enforcement, and the boards work together. So you go for a license, the board says, okay, is this allowed or not? So then it comes to us. But it's not something we pick necessarily to spend our time on, because I think if you polled, well, I speak for myself, because I don't speak, that's why we have a board, not one person is opposed, and I've lived in Raleigh almost 30 years now, for this kind of activity that takes place on 1A and other parts of town during weekends, and sometimes even, but, you know, it's, that's where outlying district has an interesting situation in this town, you know, that it doesn't, what happened is that some uses get grandfathered, and other uses, as zoning changes, have to, and as the town grew, and then, so one of the reasons I think there's only change, because as the town grew quite a bit, as you can see residentially, became a residential town as well, and a desirable residential town, then there was trying to at least give some say to the neighbors. And like you said, and not, I'm not making a judgment, anything to do with the use, but that's why these things get scrutinized more than maybe in the past, you know, 30, 50 years ago.
Okay.
And I don't know how long the flea market's been there. Mr. Todd Myers.
It's like 42 years. But I would just want to, your, the license that you're applying for, is it tied in with Todd Farm's annual license, or is it...
With Todd Farm?
Yeah. You said that you, you've applied every year...
For a junk dealer's license.
For a junk dealer's...
Antique junk dealer's license. We've had that for many years.
Could that, my friend, on the little building?
Yes.
So, you know this...
That little building is not part of that 10-acre parcel that stood in rear of it?
It's two parcels.
It's two, okay.
There, I think, I believe there's three parcels there.
Okay.
All owned by the same or relatively same entity.
You know, I know, I mean, I think a lot of us here would like to see what you're proposing continue and go forward. I think we're just looking for an hour way to do it, so that it doesn't open us up to some of the other negative consequences that might flow from it.
And that's why it's a public hearing. Yeah, that's why it's a public hearing.
And you know, as much as it's, I see your brother, you and your brother took some initiative to do this, we're just thinking, okay, now that we're taking a look at it, there may be a way to get where you need to be, and yet, keep the town, you know, be consistent with the master plan that we spent a lot of money and time on developing, so we don't just make a broad change to the zoning district to accommodate something that we'd all like to see that might arise after.
I'm not that familiar with a master plan.
Yeah.
Was the master plan accepted by the town? Okay. I'm not familiar with how the master plan goes. Our master plan is very, very simple here. We're looking for a flea market license that will allow us to do what we're doing now and deal with the transits.
I understand it completely. We do it at this point.
Okay. The reason why we're open to your suggestions is because that this may benefit some of our neighbors more so than us in overlay. The Todds have been friends of the family for a long time. You know, we know that they run a business down there, and we've, you know, tried to work with them. And now we have an opportunity to kind of share the harvest, so to speak.
Well, there's some synergy there, yeah.
So we're, we're, I don't know what an overlay district means exactly. It sounds a little bit restrictive.
Nope. It's actually less restrictive.
But I have no idea what that means, so...
Well, in this case, it just means that we would impose, you look at the map, and there's what's called a base zoning district, and that's the residential district. It covers most of the town, actually. It's strictly reserved for residences mainly. Businesses aren't allowed, businesses of any kind. So what an overlay district would essentially do, it goes on top of the base district, and it would allow two new specific uses in the area that's covered by the overlay, that would be antique shops and flea markets. So that's essentially what we're talking about.
Okay.
Accessory uses like the parking lot.
So that would make the two lots on either side of the street basically a commercial to do business.
As, as... That limited business.
Only goes two, two types. You have to, you'd have to fall within those two categories.
That's why I read some of the other ones that would open it up to. I need to get some of the people took their time, took time to come out tonight. Just mention your name and fire away. Frank Todd.
No, I...
I don't know your address.
I'm 303 Main, 275 Main. I'm for the overlay of his property. That's the Hare House, the, the old Gladiola shed, and the, what's the rest of it? Wagner property?
Yeah.
And, and that is fine. What it does is ensures the whole area stays open again. Now, I know my brother's got a for sale sign in front of his parts of the farm, but I'm for keeping the land open. And I think it's a big part of Raleigh. It's a big part of 1A. And if there's an overlay district, it should be with conditions. And that's about all I have to say.
Well, thanks. It's on the record. Anyone else?
Walter Knopf Warehouse Lane. I'm a little concerned about this concept...
What's the last name again?
No, K and O.
Okay.
A little concerned about there's no restrictions, and this came up at the last meeting as well. There's another concept of flea market that you see down south. It's a long series of ramshackle buildings filled with people selling tube socks and cheap imported Chinese junk. That is a flea market by a lot of people's definition. I can understand the overlay. It's a, it's a nice approach to it, but with no restrictions, we're opening ourselves up for...
Well, that isn't what Dave mentioned, or Cliff.
Well, one, one restriction that we're, again, this, this overlay, the idea of an overlay district is not before us tonight, so this is an alternative that the town might, might decide to go with.
But we'll take that. We're going to have to open up public hearing.
One restriction would be that the antique shop or the flea market, in order to operate, would have to get a special permit from a town board, whether that's the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, hasn't yet been determined. So, and as part of the review process, the town board could impose conditions, which is what town boards do all the time.
What it does is give the building inspector some guidance. You can't, it's such a broad brush. The building inspector has a really difficult time as zoning enforcement officer doing anything without some kind of guidelines.
And there would have to be a public hearing before this permit was issued, and, you know, the ideas of residents would have to be considered, that sort of thing.
It appears that a landscape supply operation is in there now, and a commercial parking facility. Are, have those been approved by anybody in the outlying district?
Not by the planning board, right?
Are they acceptable?
Not to my knowledge, so...
I'm not familiar with those, those places.
You'd have to bring that up with the building inspector in a written format.
Who would?
Anyone.
Anybody can.
If it works for the town, we're volunteers.
If I can just clarify that?
I don't want it to get off track. I can't get off track, because we're already getting a little off track with jumping the cart before the horse, which, so I just want to try to limit it to, you know, the original idea, so I can ask the board for a vote to recommend or not recommend what is being, what is on the table tonight.
Sharon Emery Warehouse Lane. I'm in favor of the overlay only there.
Any other comments on, two weeks ago? People have been able to refine or say yea, nay, or they don't care?
Yes. Mike Sabatini of the Brass Refound. He was not here at the last meeting, but to try to bring me up to speed, I did watch the video. So I had, you know, I watched you, I watched you, and I watched you. David, you weren't here, and I listened to you. So at the end of the meeting, when you were trying to sum up, Cliff, the proposal that was originally sent out, that's now off the table?
No, it's still on the table.
No, that's what I just said, Mike. That's what I'm saying. I want to redirect this discussion back to...
Right. Well, I know when you said we'll come out back to the next meeting, which was this one, it was more discussion about, Nate says, oh, I understand, you know, I'm just trying to get a flea market in, and then the concept was, okay, how do we drive to get the flea market in?
Well, I think Steve said the same thing tonight, which is good. I know the summary of the same thing.
Okay. So that being said, when you talk about 65 acres, is that the old concept, or is that Stephen's side of the road?
So hold, if you've had an opportunity, this is, again, this happens out of the town. You know, sometimes zoning, you know, zoning boundaries get changed. It's in essence changing a zoning, a zoning boundary of, what, 13 lots, is it?
At least 12.
12 or 13 lots and 65 acres that would be included all in the central district and all the uses that are allowed there.
Okay.
And that includes so...
So what are we talking about? Just his property? Are we talking 65 acres?
Do you look at that matter?
Both sides of 1A, including the Todd Farm, down to the back of Warehouse Lane, across the, from Todd Farm, all the land, you all, including some residential houses that also buy 1A.
I'm against my property being part of it.
The overlay?
That's why we're here. No, no, no.
The overlay, I thought...
I understand, I understand.
We're not talking overlay tonight, Frank. We're talking the other one. You know, you said yes. Overlay would, the overlay would come out of another meeting, and after, we talk to town council a little more. But we're open to, I want to get a feeling before I ask the board to take a vote, where the public and the people are impacted by this, including the proponents, not just, you know, yea or, I mean, I'm looking at the big picture here. It's kind of like a yea or nay thing, so we can get guidance.
That said, Chairman, I am against changing it from a outlying district to a pure central district.
To the central district. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I agree with that. I'm against it.
Just for the record, don't worry.
Sorry, Leslie Todd.
You're not going to show up in minutes and stuff like that, but we have to.
Leslie Todd, 309 Main, and I don't want to find a central district.
Anyone else?
Glenn Gavin, 292 Main. I don't have a problem with it.
Glenn Gavin. What's your, what's your address angle?
Say it again.
What's the address again?
292 Main.
292.
Right next door.
Glenn Gavin.
My name's Brian Hughes. I live at 260 Main Street, and I'm also here in support of the Conley's idea, and don't have any problem with flea markets.
Sorry, what was your name?
Brian Hughes.
Again, changing, it's not just flea market, it's changing that's...
Well, I've been here for the last...
Did you hear all the uses I read off tonight?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I don't agree with all those uses, but I would agree with a flea market open concept, just like what is across the street.
But if we, if, if it were written, and it came before, then the town would be voting on changing that, those 65 acres to central district and all the uses that would be allowed in that district by social preference, so filling station, whatever.
You could have, you could have a CVS in there.
Well, I would be opposed to a CVS.
Well, that's, that's why you are opposed.
All right, so you're, you're taking into consideration.
I oppose the central district. I'm in line with the outlying district, like...
You don't have to be black and white.
Overlay industry, outlying, whatever you want to call it.
We understand what, we understand where you're at. Anyone else?
Yeah. So this is not just the Conley property. This is all 65 acres.
Correct.
Well, I'm against that.
I think we all have a pretty good sense of what...
That's why I continue the hearing.
Mr. Todd.
We only, we only have to give one use of 65 acres.
Kirk, I did get a, a call and a letter from...
Excuse me. Our town planner Kirk is bringing us up to date.
From Mr. Bob Krellin, who lives at 316 Main Street. He wrote me an email saying, to follow up on our front discussion, please let this serve as my statement to the Raleigh Planning Board, that I do not have a problem with the transfer of the 316 Main Street property from the outlying district to central district.
It's good to people.
And Mr. Krellin, is that 316 Main?
Yeah.
Okay, so as a fact, he's, he's not, okay.
He owns the property. He lives in Red Island.
Do you want to take a motion?
I just want to see if anyone else, because I'm going to entertain a motion here pretty quick, because people have had over a month to talk amongst themselves, look at materials in the town office, do emails.
I think it's important to state that what we're proposing only speaks for, I believe, less than 10, 10 acres.
See, I have no problem with the 10 acres. It's just that everything else...
The proposal here tonight is for all 65 acres.
Yeah.
And it's not just for flea markets, it's for, again, the full range of commercial development or multifamily development.
This happens more often...
Across the street, Frank.
Including gas stations.
Yeah, Frank, this thing... When you have commercial involved in the center of town, I mean, I know, because I work in like a city and this has happened. When you have a city that has these like embedded districts, like a biotech district or highway business or research office district, you know, those kind of reconfigurations don't really impact residences because there's usually very few. Or when you have comprehensive zoning, you put in a mall or something. But this is why it's a little more difficult because you're really taking a line residential and making it more, almost more commercial and opening it to many commercial, not just flea markets and antiquing.
Right.
And so it's a lot easier when you're kind of like taking one commercial entity and make it just kind of change it to make it more commercial. Like we've done that on Route 1, right? As a town, right? And I've done this myself.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, that is the brunt of the issue that everybody's facing here. Everybody... I think everybody is... I certainly support Stephen on his endeavor towards the flea market. But I think like everybody else, everybody's concerned that once you flip that dial and turn it into a central district, you know, all bets are off. And everything, you know, is dynamic.
Seems like a lot of consensus around that idea.
But now that we have a planner, and I mean, I will commit as chairman to work as quickly as possible with the people that need me and can call, you know, get ZRC and to get... He knows the process because we're up against the clock.
You mean Judy Pickett, seems to be?
Yeah, Judy Pickett. So that's really great having someone I can talk to, who's talked to council. All right, so I'll take a motion.
So I move to recommend against the zoning change in the central... To change the 65 acres on 1A from outline to central district.
As depicted in the public notice.
Second.
Those lots that are stated in the public notice. And the lots are stated in the public notice and public record states each lot that is on that map.
So I, again, I recommend against the zoning ordinance alteration.
All right, it's a motion by Chris Thornton against... Is there any motion while we're voting this for? Well, if it passes, I guess we don't have to vote. I'm first over. The second by Cliff here.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
If I can just add one more thing so there's no surprises here. While everybody's here, disclose everything that we have on that lot. A few years back, I'm not sure how many years back, we cleaned up a lot of the front lot and included in that lot was, I believe it was three or four buildings that we tore down, tore the foundations out and whatnot. We have retained those as a condition of us tearing them down. We've retained the square footage of those buildings. Someday, I don't know if we related to this flea market, but we may use that square footage, which means that we may put some buildings back there that of course would fit with the lot and the surroundings. Just so that's out there. We may use that as an option later on. It may be in conjunction with the flea market, it may not.
Thank you. I appreciate the view comment and just like laying it out here with additional detail. Write the motion on the table. That stands. I have a second. All those in favor?
All right.
It's unanimous. I have to say, you know, after the first hearing, it's interesting how it changed with the first, you know, I gave it some thought too. I was more for just doing it that way. But as you brought, it is, you cannot, once it's done, it doesn't go the other way. It's hard to say how it would impact people's property values, but I don't think people in Raleigh would appreciate a process necessarily that was shoved down their throats like that.
I think people should understand that this, despite our vote, again, we just voted for a recommendation, this still could go to town meeting. So, yeah, I think you need to keep your eyes on things and see what goes on and so you can decide whether you need to attend town meeting to address the proposal.
It still potentially could go to town.
Or it could be this other alternative proposal that we've been talking about.
The alternative being just...
The overlay.
An overlay for his property.
Well, that's... We don't know what that's gonna look like.
They'd have to propose that, but I think, I mean, one thing I would like to try to... I guess we can't act on anything until there's a petition before us to do it. But I would encourage that somebody get the ball rolling and that we engage Attorney Pickett to give us a recommendation pretty quickly upon... So that we're not... We're just waiting for an opinion.
Because ZRC has to meet, come up with some other wording, not totally over complicated, that people can understand at town meeting that's very clear and what people are voting on, so it's clear. And then that could go to town meeting if we have council that would approve that. Because there's no sense having a two-thirds vote on something that the attorney general's office may strike down. Because they have 90 days to approve new zoning.
Okay, in the short term, and I'm talking flea market season, which will be here in...
Six months.
Six months. Our intent is to pursue relationships with some vendors and possibly get some tents and tables on the site in the short term under the guise of a farm fair, which we believe we have an okay on. Unless there's any objection from the neighbors and a lot of opposition that pushes us in a direction where we have to wait for town meeting and a formal...
Well, that's really... I mean, the building inspector's calling uses and complaints. Building inspector acts on written complaints from neighbors. See, that's the job. That's only, you know... People should not... People should expect zoning in town to be enforced, especially if it's detrimental to people who bought a house expecting the zoning... They bought a house with this expectation and the zoning is not enforced. It's difficult. It's a difficult job in a small town. I mean, there's only so many volunteers and so many people working, you know.
All right. Maybe, Cliff, you know the answer to this one. As a junk dealer on that site, what are the restrictions in dealing with people that would be doing, well, I guess transient vendors under that junk dealer's license?
I have no idea. I just know basically as a zoning matter that that type of thing is currently not allowed in that area in terms of what the restrictions or what you can do under a junk dealer license. I'm sorry, I just don't know.
It's very broad, and that's why it's confusing. And I guess that's part of the reason why we're here.
But I mean, that question is not before the plan... That's not something the planning boards can decide. I think that's really up to the building inspector, who's a zoning enforcement officer. He decides initially what uses, what businesses can go forward and which can't.
And which get kin to us.
And you might have an appeal from that, but he has to make that initial decision. That's not...
Well, I think it's been confusing for him because we've stated flea market.
I think you might feel the same about, you know, junk dealer if he wasn't allowed.
Well, we have a junk dealer's license.
You can have a license, but I'm not gonna get into... I can't get into that. We have other agenda items. I will discuss them. I fully intend to get help, learn. I want to learn more, too.
The other problem is the junk dealer's license is on a small person. Well, that would still allow us a pretty good frontage with basically parking in the back. And that's all he's looking for.
He's gotta be talking to you guys and Nate about the parking.
But the other thing, couldn't you have a, like a homeowner can have a yard sale or something like that?
Yard sales, you're supposed to pull... Some towns have to pull a permit.
Permit for the weekend and then you have to pull one for the next weekend.
All right, let's not digress. But we're gonna be working... You know, when I say I'm gonna work, I am with Kirk. So we call it. We're on the phone like three, four times a week.
We have two licenses. One is for shops and one is for a junk dealer's license. And the second one, the $200 one, came yesterday.
And also with, you know, 42 years that precedes it. All right, thanks a lot for coming out and for... Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. And feel free to call Kirk if you want updates.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're working well for your phone line.
All right, we have an A and R that shouldn't be... Shouldn't be a killer. A and R plan for 89 to 95 Weatherfield Street.
That is I.
It's in your packet. It's an A and R. There's a little bit... You may have to... Do you want to explain this one a little bit? You want to explain it? Who wants to explain it? You should probably... Because it has a little history here, right?
Yes.
Maybe a lot of history.
I try to be brief.
All right, state your name and who you're working for and what you want to do.
My name is Arthur Ross. I'm attorney. I have an office at 20 Lock Street in Yipwich. And I represent Deborah Smith. Deborah Smith lives at 95 Weatherfield Street. And her neighbor is Anita Schweichheimer. In any event...
Schwechheimer?
Schwechheimer.
Schwechheimer.
Yeah, thank you. In any event, the two neighbors have been conversing. They didn't know where the property, the boundary line was, and they had...
And that's not too far from you.
Excuse me?
That's not too far from you at the property.
No, no, it's...
Right in the kind of corner there.
Yeah, right.
We're on the bend, on the bend.
That's right. It's very on the bend. I think it's in this direction. But in any event, they've been conversing about where the boundary lies for years. Finally, this conversation led them into land court. We went to land court and Judge Grossman up there suggested that we could probably solve this a lot quicker if we had an agreement. So that we consulted with the engineers. And by the way, this Schwechheimer's attorney, his name is James Conley, and he's aware that I'm here tonight. And what we have here tonight is that both parties agree that the plan reflects the location of the boundary line. Neither lot has changed in area or frontage. Nothing is going to be built on either lot right now. Now, I have included in there a certified copy of a decision by the Board of Appeals. The reason I did that was because in pursuing this case, I find that in 2002, Deborah Smith applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit to convert a house into a two-family house. Her parents wanted to move in. And the special permit was granted. But the special permit had... She had put down on the application blank that the lot had less area than was represented to the... This plan has less area than she represented to the Board of Appeals in her special permit application in 2002. The reason I did that, because I did not want her, if she was someday going to sell this land, to have an inconsistency that would cause trouble in selling the land. So I wanted to get that squared away. I went to the Board of Appeals and explained the situation. And what they resolved was that they... The Board of Appeals has agreed that the special permit can remain with a smaller amount of area. Now, what happened was she put down in her application to the Board of Appeals that she had 31,538 square feet, when in fact she had 30,950 square feet. In other words, a less than, about 600 square feet difference. And the only reason I included that in there was that I wanted to make sure that everybody knew all the facts. But the facts of the matter is that what we wanted to find out where was the location of the boundary line. And we have found it. And that location doesn't... The frontage doesn't change and the area doesn't change. And nothing is going to be built on it.
There are already existing structures on both of these lots.
Excuse me?
There are existing structures on both of these lots.
Yes.
Okay.
So the line runs through a shed?
Oh, yeah.
If you look at that, where the boundary is on the GPS, but it kind of corresponds to where the fence line is. So they've come to an agreement.
I don't think we're gonna have an agreement where both bodies can use the shed.
And they've actually...
Nope.
The line is currently where that fence is, but they've come to an agreement now to correct that so that she gives up some...
This is the old line.
Yeah, so the line shifts this way. This is a...
This is the old line here. See, there's a little thing there. And they want it straight like that, so...
Just so that sliver gets redrawn?
Yeah, because this is the fence line right now. But they've come to an agreement that this is going to become the property line.
Which one? The one to the right of the shed?
So definitely clears the shed. It clears title. It clears the title.
Oh, it was a mess. I mean, the whole area of the... I don't know if you're familiar with that area, but that whole area is a problem.
It's a land transfer.
What you're asking us to do is consider this as an approval not required, even though it's a non-conforming lot to begin with, though, right? It's non-conforming in that it's not... It contains less square feet than the district requires for...
Yeah, it is a non-conforming lot. But the fact of the matter is that the frontage has not been changed.
Right.
The area hasn't been changed, so I think we've...
As much as you made the case that relief is warranted, I don't know if we can approve a lot that's of an inadequate size to get...
Well, all we're saying is not a subdivision, right? It's not all...
It's definitely...
It's a boundary line.
Not creating building blocks.
No, no, no. We're not creating anything.
It's a lot line.
The lot line hasn't changed.
Yeah, but their findings, they've already made their findings.
Yeah, right through their findings.
Just read the...
The minimus and...
Yeah, they've done their findings to clarify the lot size.
The ordinary says we can approve a Form A when it meets all the zoning requirements, and yet this one...
This one has moved its frontage on a public way.
It requires a variance.
Well, they already got...
But they've already got the variance. So now we're asking...
That's why I...
And this doesn't create a subdivision. I suppose that's what we're... Right.
And there's no change in frontage on the public way.
And we're not creating building blocks.
Crime criteria.
Right.
And this is not... It's not the first time we've changed lot lines through this process.
In fact, I think it's probably... Probably happens more times than we know without people getting the A and R approval. I'm shocked. I've never done it.
Because otherwise, you... This preventive amount has been years in land court.
Well, there's nothing wrong with a good case. I'm too right.
But they're all... It takes a while, right?
They're not your client.
Oh, as long as possible.
Don't go there.
I don't want to go goof eye here.
Did I hear that this all started in 2002 or is that just one...
No, no, no. Well, it started a long time ago. Years we're talking about. But that was when she went and applied for the special permit.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I just want... The only reason I did that was because I was, as I said, I was afraid if she went to sell it, there would be an inconsistency. Somebody, some Don lawyer would look up and find it.
Yeah, right. Yeah, they would dig it and find...
And then they were dead.
A bank.
Well, yeah, I think we can go ahead and endorse this.
So what do we need to do?
Just need to vote on approve the Form A. I mean, it's not a non-subdivision.
I would be grateful, and I'd make a nice home.
I made a motion that we approved the Form A. Thank you for your patience.
I second that motion. Yeah. Of course, you've already done it.
That's a motion by David, seconded by Chris Thornton.
I thought that hearing that you had, he was fascinating. And the reason was because I was town councilor Raleigh for 14 years.
Okay.
And from 1972 to 1986.
Wow.
And a lot of these, you know, we went through the zoning and it was fascinating. You know, I almost had a comment, but I better, I thought I better shut up.
Never comment on anybody else's case.
Why don't you get permission to speak in town meeting? You have to get permission, you know, from the moderator.
Oh, I could tell you many stories about town meetings.
Oh, yeah.
I'm glad you're here to listen. That was our second public hearing on that same issue.
Any discussion?
All right, any discussion on the A and R?
No.[1678.54]
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a kind of a fascinating one, too. Well, they...
If it solves a problem, they're probably going to get around. Was this because of a vague description? Is it a vague description that caused the problem in the first, you know, the property line?
Oh, yeah. Boy, I don't know if you know about you, Lasad terrorists up there, but, but, I mean, I'm talking about property rights. That thing is back where we are. It's, you know, it goes, the descriptions are from the elm tree, maybe to a hole in the ice.
Yeah.
Yeah, going tomorrow.
Where's he going? What are you going now?
Florida.
Jeez.
You're retired, you can do this, too.
He's retired.
What's he, uh...
Good night, thank you.
Eleven?
Yeah.
Is he going to pick this up for me tomorrow?
Yep.
Thanks for...
He's a funny guy.
Town council, fourteen years.
Rare that you have it.
Legal, legal. He can probably tell us some stories.
Eighty-six, he's one guy that preaches to all of you, it seems like, just barely, but...
Yeah, just barely.
Let's see, you're still in front of these boards twenty years from now, thirty years from now.
I've been looking up in the grass, I bet.
I'll be still showing you. It's like exercise.
Yeah, we just need three signatures.
Who's up next? Oh, by the way, I saw...
We're doing, we're doing okay.
We're doing fine, so.
Still got some?
All right, so, um...
Where am I, huh? Oh, kidding.
Why, um...
What's next?
I need to circle back.
For the...
No, but I need to circle back. Do you want to just...
White pasture.
Yeah, are we still dealing with it?
Yeah, there's the, oh, if everybody looks in this extra additional packet, there is a...
Certificate of Vote?
Halfway, the certificate of vote, and I got Larry's comments on it as well, and made the revision for Larry's recommendation.
I gave it away to somebody.
Oh, the packet?
The additional.
Well, I can make a comment.
I shoved it over in the direction with the...
I don't know if that is...
That's mine. I have it now.
Oh, it's mine.
So that's what you're going to...
No, that's my original one, though.
Because that's what he's looking for. This? Senator Marshall Evans? That's what he's looking for.
This is, no, this is mine. The additional one. I mean, I'm drawing.
There's another one here. Pick mine.
I just want to see the letter, that's it.
There should, there was another one, but it all happened.
Because you did that today.
Well, it was mine that moved over there.
All right, get to the point, because we've been beating this one, too.
Well, this, this is the, it combines the issue of the double-wide driveways that are located in, on the different streets that are outlined there, and then also all the field corrections that Larry had made. You remember, he had requested that the letters, that there be one overall letter that covers that minor, those minor modifications, but also incorporates the field corrections in a formal approval.
And we've discussed all these today.
Yeah, these are all...
Well, yeah, I just wanted, you know, and I guess I understood it at the time, but I, I was under the impression that we were just modifying the double-wide driveway for that one lot, but I also recollect, we talked about the fact that the whole subdivision was approved with, with double garage doors facing the street, and for that reason, they had to make a double-wide garage, or a curb cut to, to match up with those double-wide garages. And I'm surprised that we're, it looks like we're, there's nine...
All these lots are currently double-wide.
No, he brought that up.
I think he did, but we really dealt with it in terms of that one lot, because it was a catch base. Because of the catch base.
Yeah. This is just, just to legitify acceptance of the ASBILs so that they didn't have to go back.
Right.
And to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars and redraw the entire thing.
And if they had, oh, to the...
They would have had to survey and redraw everything.
Right.
So he was allowed as a review engineer to just basically codify and certify these field changes.
There were three, there were three things that, well, there was 45 wild pasture, which you remember Mr. Pronti was here at the lab. That was, that was where the whole double-wide driveway issue came up, but when we went out there, we discovered, well, there's all these other lots.
I see.
Then, then, then there's the issue, well, what do we do with that? We have to, we basically have to either, because we're going to be going through the street acceptance process and we're getting the ASBILs, it's going to show these double-wide. So this is actually making it actually conforming, the definitive subdivision conform with what was on the ASBILs.
Yes, okay, so by doing the minor modification or the field modification...
And there were some modifications and things fixed up.
Yeah, I think, I think we discussed all of these at various times, right?
Yeah, yeah. And then there's all the field corrections. You and I met with Larry out in several days.
I don't know, I think you can go ahead and approve it.
Yeah, remember the rubble strips instead of Larry explained that painted slow markings because rubble strips break down and there are maintenance issues.
Oh, yeah.
Those kind of things, remember? So they were more pragmatic changes as well. And then it had to do with the, where they made the cut, the sidewalk to the open space. You know, the way it was built, it was steeper than he thought. That was, the insulation, only one crosswalk and a north and a west so cliff. And we were having to... Oh, no, that was number five, the one I was just talking about. The other ones are pretty minor, you know, they're all minor.
Yeah.
And if they weren't, we wouldn't have done it this way.
No, technically, all the, the ones under motion two, they've technically all been ratified by the planning board because they, you know...
We already had votes.
Yeah, they're already votes, so this is actually just bring them all into one umbrella.
So we're voting, go ahead. So according to the letter, there's one motion, um...
Yeah, two motions.
Motion one, I need a motion, the plan shall be modified to depict the following properties.
Can we vote for all of them at the same time?
You could do one motion that incorporates...
Because it has in favor or oppose, it doesn't have that for each motion.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can, like, vote to...
It's fine.
Or to...
So I'll make a motion that we approve both motion one and both, both motion two.
Second, as discussed, second by David, motion by Cliff. Any more discussion? Those are good, quite, I'm glad you brought that up to, like, you know, because we spent so much time on forty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you have a clean copy, or you want me to come in tomorrow morning?
Yeah, me back, me back, Michael.
Thanks.
Okay, I mean...
Okay, so the next order of business is, that was unanimous. What are we doing, are they coming before us? Are we doing anything with cell towers?
Uh, this is actually, if you go in your, in your packets, and then I will, um, include, oh, yeah, include the cell tower in this additional packet. A little location map, which everybody's...
Well, what do you want us to do?
Uh, this is like another one of those antenna arrays where they're, they're proposing a T-Mobile antenna array at approximately 170 feet on the tower, and...
Which tower?
The 124 Hazel. This is the one...
The Smith Lane?
I think it's Prospect, Prospect?
Oh, they're on the hill again.
Yeah, the one that...
It's on the hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Owned by the town, right?
Yeah, it's owned by the town. They'll have to get authorization from the, but before they can go to the Board of Selectmen...
Oh, I conflated it with the other ones coming down the pike, sorry.
Yeah, so this is one of, one of those where they're, they're proposing to put these new antennas on, on the existing structure, but the existing structure won't change in its dimensions and the base station...
So it fits our zoning, by the way?
Yeah, yeah, this is another one of those.
Just make it that, but it fits the zoning.
Yeah.
To your, your, your research.
Yeah.
And your discussions.
I'd like to, I'd like to see a letter go off to, asking that, I mean, they got business on the hill, we have business on the hill. The road is a lot of upkeep, maybe they can help with the upkeep of that road?
The landlord is responsible.
Because an existing...
Well, why don't we as a board, I like that.
You know, because, I mean, right now, that road needs a lot of work, a lot of work, because we have to go up there as the town to check that water tower and, or whatever other reasons, it's town property and everything, but, you know, there's upkeep and cost for that road. I, I think we, we should be able to get some help from these people when they have to go up there.
Why doesn't Kirk work with the highway survey, and he can come up with a letter that I can bring up next meeting? We should write a letter.
Well, this would be something that the planning board may want, you can make a recommendation.
It's a non-binding, you know?
But, but, you know, yeah, I'm just saying, a recommendation, you know, no, I'm going to ask it, I mean, if the town gets some help, and, you know, help is help.
There's a lease, the, the town has a lease agreement with, with Crown Castle. I guess they would have to revisit the terms of the lease agreement.
Well, what, what's Steve, is it okay that Kirk looks into it, has time to lot?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Is that okay?
Is that, you're, you're asking...
I don't know if I can take a vote on it, but does anybody have opposition to that?
No.
Is it, is it a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, or is it to...
But otherwise, what they're asking for us today is to vote on whether we need to vote on this, or whether we wait, because of the tax relief after...
No, they don't have to do, they don't have to come before us for cycle interview.
Yeah, this is not...
So there's no change to the footprint, there's no change to the height?
They already came before us.
No, no.
This isn't...
No, but Kirk has done, this is one of these things, according to the federal law, when Kirk, Kirk has looked into it, is certifying that it complies with zoning, and that's what it is.
That's just a, a different pathway to getting this approval, than what you do with the town clerk, where previously everyone submitted something to the zoning board, but are you recommending that the town clerk approve this as, as the lessor, or...
Oh, I'm recommending that, considering the fact that, that there's no, no increase to, or no, no modification to the ground station, or expansion of the ground station, or increasing the height of the tower, then the Board of Selectmen can authorize them to, to...
Right.
We're voting to allowing them to bypass us.
Well, they're not bypassing.
Which is fine, because I think that's what, that's what the law requires us to, you know, the fact that we were, you know, kind of getting, we were encouraging them to come before us, this guy may not have been to that meeting and otherwise went it directly to the town clerk, and I suppose that, as long as we don't have any objection to it, we, we can, I guess.
I don't really have an objection.
No, neither.
They changed the height, especially on Prospect Street, you know? But I like Steve's idea. All right, who, I need a vote.
What are we voting on?
Uh, to afford, or to author, to recommend that the Board of Selectmen authorize...
Okay, right.
That they make the upgrades.
I make the motion, Kirk just stated.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have, quickly, I just want to say that, can I, would like to vote on the, before we go to minutes. A vote please on the budget. The budget is, the planner's salary is increased according to the step. Kirk's hours are still 22 hours, so that hasn't changed, there was no change, it's according to the union step, or whatever the personnel board. So that's the same, the planner consultant is the same as last year at 6,519, so that's flat funded, same as last year. Merrimack Valley Planning went up by 50 bucks.
Did that get paid, by the way?
Yeah, 1,984.
It's going to block.
And expenses are, expenses are the same as last year at 2,970. Subtotal expenses are 11,473. And just as a kind of sideline, does anyone oppose, we have some money left in the expense line item. Does anybody oppose to, kind of, we have pretty antiquated technology in the department, you can explain it briefly, you got one minute?
Oh, yeah, I was just, I've been looking into getting a projection system, and it would actually, a lot of this paper could go away, and we could actually project a lot of this, I mean, you'd still get packets, I would still send you packets.
No, maps.
Yeah, it's just that all the, am I having to print out, do handouts and stuff like that? It's kind of like, it's time consuming.
The plans are difficult on the eight and a half hour handout, so a projection would certainly help, uh...
Yeah, and so I'm looking at projectors, it'd be about a, a projector, like, for what, probably for this lighting level, for, to have 4,000 lumens, and a good resolution would be about 1,000. And we've been actually saving, I mean, there were, when I first got here, the supply, office supply was well-stocked, so we didn't really have to buy a lot, so there's quite a bit left over in the...
And it has to come out of the site, and we really don't have the ability, and we are looking into the tech. We don't have to vote on it, does anybody oppose that Kirk can go on and research it further?
No.
Okay, I mean, budget's tight in the town, but you, when he has time, as Kirk does so much, and he had 22 hours and going every direction, but they, he may look into a tech budget that might come onto like another line item that the selectmen have.
Yeah.
So we don't know, but in general, if the money is there, when I ask him, you know, the budget is the budget, I just told you, but if it's, money is there, can he do this?
Yeah.
You can always do some cannon up on the...
Other towns, you know, other towns are having good success with this projection. It's really good for people to come to the meetings, too. Because you can zoom in and this and that, and be doing it through a laptop, you know?
Yeah.
So, that's all right, so I just don't want to tell him to do anything without being transparent to the board.
Especially where we're not having to request additional funds.
Yeah, these are what we got.
Have a motion as to accept the budget.
Do we really have to vote on the budget?
I should, I want to.
Make a second.
That just shows that I...
Make a motion, we accept the budget as presented.
Second, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And it was presented to the, to the point, the finance committee has approved it, too. But it just, well, no, I mean, we could have gone back, if we didn't approve it as a board, you say cut it in half, then I'd go back to them and they would cut it down, gladly. But I think we may, both Kirk and I went to the finance meeting last night to explain what the money's been used in the past and going forward, where it's been used, and they approved it, so thank you to the finance committee.
We have minutes from, uh...
I can't throw that one in.
It's an hour, two minutes, and then Kirk can get things on, and...
Okay, I'll start on the minutes, so you missed all my name at least a couple times.
How many ways did he sound?
No, it's I, I E., not E I.
I wasn't here, it was...
I'm going to remember. E I, E I, no, E I, E I, no.
On the discussion on 56 Newburyport Turnpike, on the first page, the very last, second to last sentence, the last paragraph, Thornton makes motion, oh, it should be two, to continue. Thornton makes motion to continue this public hearing until, rather than on, well, I guess, I guess on is okay, well, I think until is more, is more, or two, Marshall Evans. Continuing with the hearing two, Marshall Evans.
Right.
I mean, there are other things I could comment on, but, uh...
Now that he's retired, he's got additional time for grammar.
That's the thing, I know. Uh, the last page of discussion on wild pastures, the last sentence, or the last line there, Thornton motions to reduce to 30. We should say, reduce it to what? To $25,000.
Yeah, I have my own comments and questions, but I think we answered it with today's meeting when we actually took a vote to do that, uh, so I guess the...
Jeez, don't break it. What happened? Can you look it over first? You've got feedback, too, of course. I'm not going to vote on anything that you don't want. No, you take a look at it. Any other changes?
Um, well, I, I have some comments on the Main Street zoning amendment.
Go for it.
Uh, in the first paragraph, he states that was necessary before a license for the flea market could, uh, could be licensed by the Board of Selectmen, was necessary before a license for the flea market. You know, I, I mean, it's not smooth, and also, the flea market, Mr. Todd can continue to maintain his flea market, so that's not the flea market we're talking about. I think before, a license from an applicant for a flea market within the district.
I agree.
Yeah.
For a use such as a flea market or anti...
Right.
Or a flea market or similar use.
Because it just, I mean, otherwise, I think everyone just assumes the flea market, what is that, in the question, the licensing for the flea market in town? We love the flea market.
Again, that's a, yeah, kind of a nebulous term, too.
Well, that's, I mean, certainly a good point. I, I don't think when we finally do act on it, we're gonna just say flea market without getting a little more specific as to what activities tonight do.
It's a nebulous...
Yeah, well, I mean, he's right, you know...
It broadened tonight, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's a surprise. All the people in the polls at the first time, they weren't even here tonight. And that was the idea of...
Some of them worked, too.
Some worked.
Some worked. At least there was at least one, anyway.
It's a good point, though. Any other ones, Chris? We can hold up. You want more time? We can do this, uh...
I'm good on that.
We can do these on the first, if you want. I mean, if they, if people are really, if it's kind of like the recollection is different than what Kirk wrote.
Yes, right.
All I heard is the meeting went late.
Yeah, nice of you not to show up.
I'm good on that.
I have full attention to covering.
I move, we accept the...
Any other?
Any changes?
No. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No, I can't.
I think we're moved that we accept the meeting, uh, the minutes of the meeting from February 18th as amended tonight.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Castle, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, you're, do you have anything to sign?
Yes, um, let's see, I have a, a, uh, a pivot to Town Common for the legal ad that we ran for zoning. And then also W B Mason for paper supplies. And then I need one more signature from somebody for, I'll shoot my last hundred.
Oh, I guess...
I think I signed one.
This first paper, eh?
Yeah, and, uh, then the, uh...
Just need three of them, please.
I think those were the only, yeah, those were the only two that needed to be signed.
You have any other pressing killer items?
Let's see, I'm gonna go... Um, let's see, just to...
Under the planner update category, because that's the only update on the plan.
There was a, uh...
This one, too?
Listen up. Just, if you wanna get out of here, you gotta listen, Kirk.
I'd gotten, uh, um, there was a, there was an ad that ran in, in the paper, in the, you know, in the Gloucester Daily Times, um, about 504 Newbury Port Turnpike, uh, and they're looking at doing a cell tower there.
A new?
A new cell, a totally new cell tower, and, um, they, I think when the, this was a due diligence company that was, um, and an archaeologist who actually called me for, I, I, for some reason, they needed to go through, uh, there was a historic preservation requirement, uh, that they give 30 days notice, uh, to, to allow for public comment. It's not in a historic district, uh, just, I guess, first of all, I don't know what historic significance it has or if something appeared on the site.
And the Indian, Indian artifacts there, or...
Yeah, they, he, they didn't really say, but in terms of, uh, I was just gonna respond and just let them know what, what I'd actually already told them on the phone, but do a formal response, uh, just to let them know that, uh, that isn't in a water supply district, well, you know, so, just to let them know what they're gonna be having to, um, having, the process that they'll be having.
504 Newbury Port Turnpike? Where is that?
It's, it's, um, uh, on the north, north of three, uh, of, uh, of, uh, Havel Street, I think. Actually, didn't go in, I was just like, trying to think of what it was.
Well, bring in more detail.
We're just gonna tell them what the process is.
Yeah, I'm just gonna tell them what the process is. Uh, they're gonna need, I mean, of course, uh, special permits, site plan review, um, so I've already let them know.
I need to give them a look.
Is it upland or is it, it's gonna be wetland for them to put a cell tower in there, right?
There may be wetlands back there, but that's something they'll have, you know, have to talk about.
It's not down off the Havel Street? Is it off the Market Basket?
I think it's, I think it's like, uh, yeah, I think it's, oh, it's on the, on the west side of the road, but I think it's just above Market Basket.
No, no, it's, it's above Wet, it's showing it.
Is it town property? It's above Weathersfield.
Oh, okay.
Way up then.
Above, okay.
Is it, is it town property?
No, 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 it's private. It's, um, I, I looked it up.
We have no details on what the tower is and how they gave you...
No, it's discovered by Brent and Kirk in the paper.
Yeah.
I saw it in the paper.
It was a notice.
I talked to them on the phone.
What?
About, but they, they had run this ad after I had discussed it with them on the phone. But they're just asking for public, or any public comment, uh, but they're still gonna have to come to the planning board for site plan and schedule site plan.
Do we ask whether the tower is really necessary? Who determines the necessity of the tower?